Alexandra, so if you'll come to the podium, please ma'am, state your name and address. And then we allow about three minutes to hear your concern. Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the flooding of the eight hundred block of Howard and Marshall. And I had talked to the city manager and he came out and they're supposed to be trying to find out is something like a drain back there, but really we don't know. You all said that you were gonna take a pitch, put something down there to take a picture of it.
Yes.
And I don't know if you all have taken care of it. I was trying to find out where are you all with that right now? Because it has grown up really, really bad since you all were over there.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll, we'll visit with you after our meeting. Thank you for your concern. Anyone else that wanted to sign up that did not, this is your time?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thomasine and Tom.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Our next item is our consent agenda. Items under our consent agenda require little or no deliberations by the council. It's our minutes, approval of a street closure for the Christmas parade, and a policy regarding implications at public meetings. So I will entertain a motion for our consent agenda.
I'm going to, we approve our consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion on those items? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Number eight is action out of executive session, and we do have one item. So I think Ms. Councilman Gallagher is gonna read the motion.
Yes, we do. Mayor, I'd make a motion to ratify the JEDCO board's finding that the purchase of Lot Three Custom Coils subdivision of the City of Jacksonville by Bario Energy LLC or its affiliate for use as a data center will promote a public purpose and authorize the net proceeds of the sale of the real estate being remitted by JEDCO to the City of Jacksonville.
Okay, we have a motion of Councilwoman Mindy Gallagher.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae. Any discussion, comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number nine is a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding the proposed 2024-2025 budget. Do you want to do anything with that?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I thought it would be best to give a briefing that will be pertinent to items nine and ten, and then you can open the requisite public hearings and take action. We will have to take a roll call vote on each of these items and use specific language.
Okay.
The title of this year is Proposed Budget, the FY 2025 Budget, which starts October 1 of 2024. And I'll take us through September, the end of September in 2025 is Unity in Action. It's now more important than ever to lean on collaboration and grants and community partnerships to make sure that we continue to move the needle forward for the citizens and businesses and visitors of Jacksonville. I'm gonna give a little bit of a consolidated presentation tonight, but if folks want to see the, the more comprehensive presentation made on August 13th, that'd be available on the city's website via YouTube and I believe Facebook. But here's a look at the net taxable assessed value that we had to work with as we went into the year's budget process. So you see that it only inched up just a nominal 1.31% as compared to the 2023 year. And if we apply the same tax rate, the proposed tax rate that we'll be discussing here in a moment, to the new taxable, net taxable value, you see an increase of $83,006.73 to the, to the city in terms of revenue. And that, that's a large, large amount to a household budget, but to a city budget with increasing costs for equipment, for labor, for personnel, with a staff that really wants to move the needle forward for our citizens, that's a very, very small number. $83,006.73 does not go a long way in terms of buying new police cars and hiring new police officers and things of those nature. So to that end, this was a year, and this was a budget that really reflects, I think, the strain on many of the households in Jacksonville. Your council is very sensitive to that. We want to meet needs, not create needs. So we are proposing a flat tax rate of 63.763. That's not what you see on the agenda, and that is due to some procedural steps that we take every year that again was elaborated upon at the August 13th meeting. But again, that rate or that increased net taxable value just there at $1,333,000 is the smallest increase in the net taxable value that the cities, I would say, experienced, and I'm gonna call it the modern, the modern history, if you will, the last 10 years. And I didn't even go back beyond that, but it's a very, very nominal increase. And on the screen below that table are some of the reasons that we saw and experienced just such an incremental step forward in the net taxable value. And some of it, I'd say the, the bulk of it relates to changes in state law. The first being a 20% cap on non-homestead limitation. What that is, is that now commercial properties, as opposed to only residential properties with the homestead exemption, can only go up 20%. There previously was not a cap. And so what that did is that put about $23 million in value in what I'm gonna call like a holding pattern or the holding pen, meaning that it didn't, we're not realizing the revenue from that. So that took about $150,000 away from the city. So, you know, had we added that to the 83, we would have been closer to the 230. And then the largest impact was the passage of state law that did go to the voters in fairness to the state legislature, and that was for the exemption of the value for medical and biomedical personal property. We saw $39 million of value come off the tax rolls that was on the tax rolls. So the 23 million, we had never realized that that value hadn't come on yet. It would have come on had it not been for the 20% cap. But the bullet point to the medical and biomedical personal property, we had that $30 million on the tax rolls. We had that revenue last year and it disappeared. So we lost a quarter million dollars right there. So your council and your staff had to find ways to, again, continue to move the needle forward, but account for the loss of $250,000 in revenue from the commercial sector. Our commercial properties in the JCG One, which are properties largely fronting Highway 69, we would have expected them to probably go up in the neighborhood of 5% to 10% in value, or, you know, conservatively 5%. And to the contrary, they went down $197,000. When you, when we added them all up, we're about $39,000 in revenue. So right there on that slide, you see almost a half a million dollars in revenue loss to the City of Jacksonville. We had some closings that also impacted the bottom line. Again, we are proposing, we've built the budget that the council's received in numerous different workshops and presentations around the 63.763 tax rate. You'll see that that remains exactly flat from the current tax year. We did have a three-year stretch at the 69 cent rate stemming from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 21, but the last three years, the council has worked to reduce the tax rate as the tax base accelerated a little more quickly than we realized this year. So with that, this is kind of where the rubber meets the road for our average homesteads. The average homestead value in fiscal year 24, which is our current year, was at $140,000. And when you applied that tax rate of, the current tax rate of 63 cents, you had city taxes due of 893.03. Of course, your bill was higher than that because we're only one piece of the pie. The school district, the county, the lateral road, our other taxing entities. But your tax bill to the city would have been 893.03 based on that home value. What we saw this year as we went into the budget is the average homestead taxable value has increased 10.5%, which is quite a bit more than that 1.31% that we saw as a whole when you add all the properties and business personal property accounts that apply to the net taxable value. But the average taxable value now sits at 154.802. When you apply the flat tax rate, you see an increase of about 10%, exactly the increase in the value to the tax bill. And so the average impact, or the impact of the average homestead, I should say, would be $94.04 increased payment to the City of Jacksonville to provide services funded by property taxes such as police, fire, EMS, streets, library, museum, development services, administration, parks, animal control, code enforcement, and the list goes on. That's kind of the, that's kind of the condensed version of what we were up against this year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, but you would need to take kind of specific action as it pertains to adoption of the budget, which is item nine, and then adoption of the tax rate, which I have very specific language to be read on that item. But we'll need a roll call on both items.
Okay, so at this time, I will open a public hearing to hear and receive citizen input regarding the proposed 2024-25 budget. So if anybody would like to speak in favor of or against, now's your time to come to the podium and speak. Seeing and hearing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing. And we will go to item B, which is to discuss and consider possible action of the ordinance adopting the 2024-2025 budget. So I will entertain a motion to adopt the proposed budget.
Is this the one?
This is a roll call vote, but it doesn't have to have the specific language that a tax rate does.
I make a motion that we take action and approve the ordinance adopting the 2024-2025 budget.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallagher. So we'll take a roll call.
Yes, sir.
So Councilman Goen.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae.
Yay.
Mayor Randy Gorm, yes. Councilwoman Latitia Horace.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Mindy Gallagher.
Yes.
Okay, five to zero. Very good. Item number 10 is, I will now open a public hearing to hear and receive citizen input regarding the proposed tax rate of 0.66445 per $100 valuation as stated in our agenda. So if you're tired of, come and talk for our against. Hearing and seeing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance adopting a tax rate for the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget.
And, and prior to the motion being made, I want to, I want to just clarify something. This is the official language required by the state, but it's quite confusing. I'm gonna read the motion. I'm not making the motion, but this is how the motion has to be entered into the minutes, and it's that I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 63.763 cents, which is effectively a 4.6% increase in the tax rate. Again, the tax rate is staying exactly flat out to several, several decimals. No change there, but per state law, because we are bringing in that increased revenue of $83,000, we have to read it as this, being an increase in the tax rate. It's really an increase in the revenue with the tax rate remaining flat, but that's how we have to do it. This is the motion.
What's the 664?
So I'll correct.
Well, yeah, to clarify for the public, that's, that's a great question, Councilman Goen. The 66445, which was posted on the agenda, that's kind of at the upper limit of the voter approval tax rate. And the reason we leave it there is because the council could tonight adopt that rate. And based on the August 13th meeting being roughly a month prior to tonight, should something have broken, should we have realized we made a mistake in the budget? Should an unfunded need have arisen? We could have asked the council to adopt that rate, and then it brought in more than that $83,000. But we didn't find any mistakes, errors, no requests were brought to our attention, so we're able to keep it at the flat rate.
Is that our choice is to keep it there?
Correct. Yeah, that, that's.
The last.
I mean, in my mind.
We were padding ourselves with a few hundred thousand dollars.
I think we did that in the event something catastrophic came up that we needed that extra $2.50, but nothing did, so our budget's based on the .633.
Is it smart?
We, we have a little bit of contingency, and we also have fund balance above the required policy reserves in the general fund. So we could always make a mid-year budget amendment. We couldn't change the, change the tax rate mid-year, but we have some funds we could pull from should an emergency arise.
So I'll make a motion, and I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.63763, which is effectively a 4.6% increase in the tax rate. So we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae. Any discussion we might need? If not, all in favor say aye.
Oh, yeah, no, pardon me.
Rob, Councilman Goen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae?
Yes.
Mayor Randy Gorm, yes. Councilwoman Latitia Horace?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Mindy Gallagher?
Yes.
And we have five yeses. Very good. Thank you. Item number 11 is to discuss and consider possible action in ordinance establishing a maximum reasonable and prudent rates of speed on certain portions of certain streets and highways and public places in the City of Jacksonville.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I think the exhibit is a little bit easier to digest and understand than is the ordinance itself. But Councilwoman Horace and Rhenissa Wade, our ACM, and myself met with Tech Dot several months ago, talked about a myriad of different kind of concerns and just items that we wanted them to investigate, and they've been just great to work with, a few of those being the continuous center turn lane to turn into the golf course area and Pebble, kind of Pebble Beach out there. I think that's been a great safety enhancement for both east and westbound traffic. Another was allowing for a new driveway approach into our public safety complex at 911 South Bolton that we currently have in the works so that visitors can pull into that property and visit the facility straight from Bolton as opposing to have it turn on Deveraux. That required a state permit because South Bolton is FM 348, I believe, and seven, and controlled by the state. State Highway 135, many of us know this as East Pine. This is the highway east toward Troup from US 69. And what we asked them to look at based on some accident data that they, that they track was reducing the speed limit. And so there have been a couple instances of significant, even a fatal accident at kind of that Sheridan Pierce intersection on Highway 135 in the last three years. Couple things that play into that. You kind of have an interesting intersection alignment. You kind of have three roads convening there, as well as a hill that kind of limits your visibility, especially as you work your way from the east and move westward. And so after a traffic study that they conducted on January 3rd of this year, they basically crunched the numbers, if you will, got with the commission, the Transportation Commission out of Austin, and that dashed portion of the line there, the road that you see indicated on the slide, will be reduced from a 55 mile an hour speed limit to 50 based on the passage of this ordinance and action that had already been taken at the state, the state level. I don't know exactly when the signs will be changed, but we'll be working through the state based on your direction this evening. As you exit the town toward Troup, it'll remain at 60, and as you get to the closest proximity to Highway 69, it'll remain at the 45, which is as currently posted.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to, on that ordinance establishing those rates.
Mayor, I make a motion that we establish the maximum reasonable improvement rates of speed on certain portions of certain streets and highways and public places.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Latitia Horace?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallagher. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to add, I concur with everything James said. And one of the first things Rob told me when I came on council was the wheels of government do turn slowly. And yes, Tech Dot has been great to work with, but I tell you, it's been, it's been quite the process in getting this done. But we definitely do appreciate them coming alongside us and working with us to get this done. We're still working hard to try to make 135 a little bit safer. There was just another accident out there not too long ago, a couple of weeks ago. So there's still a lot of work to be done. We'd love to see some more lighting out there and some more signage. So there's, there's definitely still some work to be done, but they seem receptive to it. They're listening to us. And so for now, that's, that's what we ask for.
Can you help me with the tomato bowl intersection red light?
I'm here for you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and second on the, on the table, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 12, to discuss and consider possible action authorizing staff to sell or auction the existing Vector truck.
Yes, Mayor, in February of this year, the council authorized the purchase of a new Vector truck. And so this is just the approval to sell the existing Vector truck, which was on a mile after mile program with a guaranteed buyback price from the equipment sales company of 135. We feel very confident we can exceed that number by taking it to market privately via a myriad of different government-based auction websites. We haven't decided exactly which platform yet, but we would set that kind of as the, the lower end of the threshold. Anything we get above that's above the guarantee, but I think we'll exceed that number in the tens of thousands of dollars. And then we do expect delivery of the new unit potentially as early as October. We think that timeline's shifting to probably closer to the end of the calendar year. Of course, we will not dispose of this unit until we take delivery of the new unit.
Okay. So I will, I will entertain a motion authorizing staff to sell that truck.
I'll make a motion authorizing staff to sell the, the Vector truck.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 13, discuss and consider possible action, request street closure on September 20th, 2024 from 5:45 PM to 9:00 PM for the Piny Woods Custom Woodworks grand opening.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, Tommy Spell, I think the owner of Piny Woods there, indicated in the building with the star there at the, I guess, south end of South Main Street, closest to Larissa Street, made this request in writing to the city about two weeks ago, I believe, for a grand opening to include food, bounce houses, music, and alcohol on Friday, September 20th from 5:45 PM to 9:00 PM. He did initially request that just the area in the bold red be closed. However, and I think this was a prudent recommendation, at a staff level, we're a little fearful of people trying to make U-turns in the area shaded. Basically, what he had done is indicate parking to the north of that closure. It's somewhat dangerous to have cars trying to make U-turns with just sawhorse barricades, which aren't a hard barricade when you have a crowd congregating on the other side. There is parking that would likely be available on a, on a Friday evening after businesses are closed in close proximity to this and other areas. So we're just asking to close, for council approval, to close the stretch from 79 all the way to, to Larissa for the purposes of this event. There'll have to be some barricades with signage related to no alcohol beyond this point to satisfy TABC rules. Basically, that's what I know.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on that item.
I'll make a motion that we approve a street closure on September 20th for Piny Woods Custom Woodworks grand opening.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallagher. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 14 is to discuss and consider with possible action adjusting to TM, TMRS benefits to include a non-retroactive repeating COA for retirees.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I know you got a special presentation from Anthony Mills of TMRS. He came here in person, I believe, from the Austin area on August 20th, if memory serves. I was unable to attend that meeting, but he gave you kind of a comprehensive overview, I believe, of our current plan design through the Texas Municipal Retirement System, which is the retirement benefit package offered to many, many state employees, or excuse me, city employees working throughout the state of Texas. And it's the system that we utilize here in Jacksonville. So you see the plan design there. There's a lot of different levers, if you will, and options we have. We are asking, and we have built the budget around this because we've, we've prized you of this a few different occasions, but we're asking to basically take the COA type to non-retroactive, which was recently an option authorized by the state legislature in relation to this pension program, which will save the city in this planned budget year, the FY 25 year, $51,926. And then the next year, probably just incrementally more and more and more and more. So as you go out in time, it'll save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Basically, what it, what that does, if you leave it on, if you leave it retroactive as it currently is, is anytime that a COA is given via TMRS and then matched half, half of that by the city, it wouldn't only look at the year that that was given, it would take, basically go into account on all the prior years since that person had retired. And so this just kind of makes it only going forward from the time it is authorized by both TMRS and the city. So I'm sure Anthony was much better at explaining that than myself, but it's necessary for the budget and in the best interest of the, the public.
Very good. So I will entertain a motion on item number 14.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we pass an ordinance suggesting the TMRS benefit to include non-retroactive repeating COA for retirees. to include non-retroactive repeating COA for retirees.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gillick, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 15 is to consider all matters instant and related to approving and authorizing publication and posting of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto for improvements to the Double Creek wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this was the one item I mentioned at the Thursday workshop that was not on the agenda but would be added. A little bit of timeline and background, as Councilwoman Horace mentioned, things seem to move slowly, and it seems like they come before you multiple times before you see the fruits of your action. But on January 9 of this year, you did authorize staff to submit a request to the Texas Water Development Board for financial assistance for expansion of the city's Soul's Stormwater Treatment Plant, which is down Highway 204, and it's referred to as the Double Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. Again, in August, on August 15 of 2024, we received notice that we received financial assistance and kind of a two-piece component, which we were really, really blessed as a community to receive. So the project was estimated by our engineers at $11.7 million. $8.1 million of the financial assistance that we were awarded from the Texas Water Development Board is going to come in the form of principal forgiveness, meaning it's forgiven. And we are responsible for the outstanding balance of the $3.5 million as currently estimated. So tonight is action just to make notice of your intent to issue COs. The actual issuance of the COs would come again on your November 12 agenda. So you won't hear much about this between now and November 12, but trying to get this project underway so make sure that we have capacity at our stormwater treatment plant is basically going to double the capacity. We're essentially going to mirror the facility with this project.
Okay. I will entertain a motion on item number 15.
Well, I'll make a motion that we issue our certificate of obligation for the wastewater treatment plant as described by our city manager.
Okay, we have a motion by Tim McRae?
Close enough for a second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen, and it's just, it's the notice of intent, right?
Correct.
We're proving the notice of intent to issue this certificate.
And this is in the budget.
Yeah, totally in the budget. Okay, any discussion we need to have other than that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 16 is open forum for mayor and council. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about? Discuss?
Well, I can say as the director beneficiary of the street repaving, resurfacing on Panita Street, we've had, I've had a couple people tell me how nice it is and how it's improved the, you know, overall aesthetics and everything.
Sure.
I just wanted to say that.
That's great.
I keep sloshing my coffee on Austin, so enjoy.
Well, you can come down Panita Street anytime you want, so.
Anything else? Next is a city manager's report.
Mayor, just a couple items. Tuesday, October 1, downtown Jacksonville, National Internet. Of course, we had the proclamation tonight, but again, one, number one in the nation last year. I don't believe we're formally competing this year. We want to give some opportunities for other communities of our size to be recognized for their efforts. But since moving that downtown, it's just been phenomenal. The things Amanda and the police department and our fire department are able to, to do to bring the community together and really the business community in Jacksonville. We are tremendously blessed by their outpouring of support, not only at this event, but they just meet a lot of needs in this community, known and unknown. Voting Access Grant Project been talked about for probably almost half a decade now.
There's your wheel turning slow.
Yes, there's your wheel turning slow.
The sewer plant was right up there with it.
Yeah, the, the more free money you take, the slower the wheels turn. But this is going to be a phenomenal project, expected to kick off very early October. Notice of award, notice to proceed have been issued via our engineering firm to the contractor, Heartbeat Construction out of Tyler. We're thankful to have a, what I would call a regional business with leadership right in Tyler here, as opposed to somebody from out of state or hours away. That way, I think we'll streamline communication. It's 240-day calendar construction contract, which is eight months. So we're hoping to try to wrap up right around that Memorial Day timeline. We're going to do everything we can. The two kind of big hurdles, if you will, or big transitions we'll have to manage are the restrooms and the fueling, because we're going to have restrooms go away and new restrooms be built generally where they were. And then we're going to have a fueling system go away and a new fueling system and tanks and point-of-sale system be installed generally where the existing one is. So those will be the two things to look out for as we navigate those transitions. We'll put out some press releases and other information, but it's going to be a very, very exciting project. We do anticipate on Tuesday, October 1 as well, or Monday, October 1, whichever that is, I apologize, another meeting of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. The last couple of years, council has really made it a priority to focus on dilapidated and substandard structures throughout town and done a really commendable job at removing dozens of these throughout town. We're probably in the neighborhood of 50 in the last couple of years. Want to thank JEDCO for their support. They've pulled alongside the city with $50,000 the last at least two budget years, and I know have programmed that into the FY 25 budget year as well. But I expect, I think we believe that 12 properties will be heard at the October 1 meeting. Sometimes those come and go based on owner notification, but somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 will be considered on October 1. And then based on action taken by the Zoning Board of Adjustment, we'll put together a bid package and work toward demolition probably latter half of the fourth quarter. And then to Councilwoman Gillick's comments, the road projects have definitely been well received. I think we're very pleased with the contractor, with the engineer that helped, and then Randall's been keeping a close eye on the project as well. Burma, we really did, did our best to kind of spread the love, if you will, and stretch the dollar in how we went about assessing, analyzing, and using the data we had to select, I guess, the best treatment, if you will, based on the condition of the roads. But I think you see Burma and Panita on those photos on the screen. That project's wrapping up. I think the last thing to do is a little bit of a fog seal, which is kind of a top seal coat on the Panita stretch, and then that contract will be done. So really, I think, pretty limited impact to mobility and to bus routes and things like that, so it was really well done. And that's all I have.
Okay, very good. We'll spend a journey 644, thank you for your participation.